On a flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All meetings are ordered. Linda is the only one absent, and I think she was calling in, but I don't see where she was called in. We do have a visitor, Steve Newkirk, and I don't see him. If he shows up, we'll give him a chance. Newkirk's out of his house and down Carter Street. Okay, consent agenda. We have Treasury Support approval minutes of November 8, and two payment bills. Okay, December 1st, Treasurers report amount of $460,374.83 as payable checks. And of those, total major vendor checks out of that money is $325,508.80. Payroll for November 25th was $135,853.75. And we have two monthly bond payments for $60,518. And add all totals up to be $656,738.76. We have the minutes and approved payment of bills. Get a motion to approve the consent under motion. Comment to motion, Regis second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? I'm sorry. Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes, she did.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, have your own new bill. That's we got an ordinance, moed out supplemental agreement at airport. And I don't know the bill numbers. Do you have the bill numbers right here?
Here she comes.
Where is the? Cassie, we need the bill numbers. Bill numbers and bill number.
I think I've got them.
I haven't.
She said we vote.
Around 4.1.
Okay. Does that want any copy please? Pardon? Does that want any copy please?
No.
Oh, she hasn't. I've got one right here. So we're doing bill number 22-120, an ordinance approving a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission second supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, project number AIR 206-057B-1.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Regis second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill number 22-120, an ordinance approving a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission second supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, project number AIR 206-057B-1.
Got a motion on the secondary.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Regis second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3931, an ordinance approving a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission second supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, project number AIR 206-057B-1.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-121, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Got a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3932, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, after second clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, any of you want to tell them about this next? It's an ordinance.
This is on the gap financing on the treatment plant. We asked for an extension due to material, not being able to get materials in time for the wastewater plant. We asked for a 24-month extension, but we really feel we would only need maybe 18 months on the financing. So this is just extending what we currently have with no changes for 18 months.
This is all done by Glenn. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-122, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435 and extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of special obligation bond series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, Regis second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-122, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435 and extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of special obligation bond series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Okay, got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a lease with Blue Star Families. I believe that's the same price that they've been paying, so it's just a renewal. Read this bill, please.
Bill number 22-121, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Got a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-121, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, any of you want to tell them about this next? It's an ordinance.
This is on the gap financing on the treatment plant. We asked for an extension due to material, not being able to get materials in time for the wastewater plant. We asked for a 24-month extension, but we really feel we would only need maybe 18 months on the financing. So this is just extending what we currently have with no changes for 18 months.
This is all done by Glenn. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-122, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435 and extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of special obligation bond series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, Regis second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-124, an ordinance amending city of St. Robert's manning chart.
Got a motion on the first reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the one we did in closed section at the last council meeting, pay for AVIDA increases. Read this bill, please.
Bill number 22-125, an ordinance establishing compensation for the appointed position of city administrator.
Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is on Mark, which he all agreed to.
Mark who?
I don't know. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-126, an ordinance establishing compensation for the appointed position of assistant city administrator.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-125, an ordinance establishing compensation for the appointed position of city administrator.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion. John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one is on Mark, which you all agreed to.
Mark who?
I don't know. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-126, an ordinance establishing compensation for the appointed position of assistant city administrator.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Glenn second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-126, an ordinance establishing compensation for the appointed position of assistant city administrator.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Glenn second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next one's the 22 budget closeout.
I also don't have the exhibit for that.
She's got that.
I just handed it. I just handed it to you.
Oh, okay, that's what that other one was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Didn't have a.
So this is 2022 Exhibit A. Okay, bill number 22-127, an ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement and utilization of a revised 2022 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the. Charles makes a motion, Glenn second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-127, an ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement and utilization of a revised 2022 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3938, an ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement and utilization of a revised 2022 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion, Todd second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the execute David Nassan's telecommunications, I guess, is going to give the city free high-speed.
Well, the way this sets up, we already have a water tower in the water towers, and they're already giving us free internet for the city hall and the RV park for that. We had forgotten that, and so had the owner of the business. So what they're doing today is a very complicated contract, but I kind of stole one that this gentleman did with St. James, and somebody at St. James did a very thorough job on this. So I stole it and carry edited it. And so basically, it's $10 a pole with all the restrictions there. So we get paid $10 a pole when they attach it. Talk to Steve about it. Steve's only issue with it is if they're making a metal attachment to a pole that then be approved by our utility folks before that.
That's $10 a pole per year.
Per year. Not. It's per year annually.
And he got Bell's Motel over here and some other, here close to the water towers.
Mary, has anybody estimated how many poles that is?
Well, you can go on all of them, but once he goes on them, now he starts paying. He doesn't start paying $10 for a pole.
Well, it's kind of a, Charles, it's kind of an integrated contract, because we knew that when he put the poles up on the water towers, that this was coming behind it. So we're getting, also getting the free, it's kind of a comprehensive deal, kind of an integrated contract. We're getting free internet plus, it's just a combination on the poles and the water tower. So we're getting both.
So he's initially going to start in this area over here in the city hall, and he's pretty good.
And the city of Richland's been very, very happy with the internet they've been getting for about two years now.
So this internet service is strictly for the municipal and not for the communities that own the.
No, this is, that's why he's going on the pole, so he can start going into the residential and the businesses and all that.
He wants to give it to the community, but he needs our resources. So we're authorized under our statute to be able to do this, provide a public service throughout the city.
Okay.
So we can use city assets to facilitate him to give us to the city, so we have more competitors in the internet arena.
Absolutely. Outstanding.
It's one D.
One D, yeah. We've got to do something.
Yeah, high-speed stuff.
Yeah, we've got to do something.
Read it as a bill.
Bill number 22-128, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with HFL Networks LLC to make attachments of telecommunication facilities to city utility poles.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 3939, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with HFL Networks to make attachments of telecommunication facilities to city utility poles.
Got a motion on the reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, 410. We're up to Steve. You want to tell them about this bypass pump? I know you talked to committees.
This, what's up next is a bypass pump. What we're mainly using it for is the pump station six. Case, I don't know if you guys remember earlier this year, it, that station went down. We had ours in place there for a while. We'd, we've used ours, I think it was 2006. So we've used it multiple times, had multiple hours on it. We knew its life expectancy wasn't very long, and when they quit us, so then we had to rent one. This one right here will replace the one that we had. So in case we do need to bypass pump that again, we will have it in place. Plus, it'll do some other stations for us, not just that one. It is mobile, so we can move it around whenever we need it.
About a year wait. About a year wait on it?
Yeah. I think in the bid documents, I wrote up.
Yeah, they always extend.
They did. I think it was 28 to 30 weeks.
They'll probably go.
Yeah.
Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-129, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bypass pump from and the payment of an annual field smart technology monitoring fee to velocity.
Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, Todd second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3940, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bypass pump from and the payment of an annual field smart technology monitoring fee to velocity.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, Todd second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, I hate to put you on the spot again, the trucks. You want to explain about that? We got the ordinance on here. What happened to that $400,000?
Yeah, I guess, you know, you guys approved $400,000 worth of spending on some new trucks. And this includes, this is cabin chassis and beds and the whole complete.
Plows, really?
Yeah, plows, spreader, everything. For, one of them's a pickup, and then three of them are cabin chassis with specialty beds on them. So when we, when we got all the bids back in, we come up a little short. So we was at about, we're about $35,000 short. So that's what we're asking for that, that extra 35, too.
Yeah, you discussed this in the committee the other night.
Yeah.
Republican.
Yeah. We, when we first done the purchasing, we, I wasn't for sure if we was doing beds and all, or if that was just for the cabin chassis. But I guess it was for everything, and it almost covered it. I mean, we got to figure the, the price of just a regular F-150 pickup at the city's cost, you know, because we get fleet cost. The last one we bought was 2020. This year's 2022. It went up 16,000. So that's how much price difference.
Plus, we could only buy one truck instead of all four, three solid, or three at a once.
Yeah, Ford's doing allocations this year, so we was allowed, out of the four, we was only allowed to buy one.
So Steve took some initiative, got ahold of the vendor that was doing the beds, and he get, he orders trucks, so we got three trucks out.
Yeah.
So are they not all being bought from Ed Morris?
Not all, no.
So this ordinance isn't correct?
Yeah.
And have a lot being bought from Ed Morris Ford? I didn't get.
Yeah, three of them will not be because they turned this on.
So what do you want to do, your group? I don't know.
Can we just increase the spending amount?
We were.
I think she's able to.
I was told to increase the spending when they're buying one truck.
Two.
Two? You're buying two trucks from Ed Morris. Where are you buying the other ones?
Grand Burke equipment.
So this, this ordinance isn't correct?
Ken Morris and Grand Truck?
They didn't tell us about them.
Yeah.
That's okay. I mean, I could either.
Just occur.
Why don't, why don't, Mayor, we can just simply.
Add, and this.
We can expand, we can expand your $400,000.
Yeah.
And we can add a little bit of language that gives you the discretion to go ahead and make the purchases where you and Steve decide, and then we incur that. So give me a minute to fix this, and we'll fix it.
Okay.
Okay.
So where else can we, Steve, help me here for a little bit?
I mean.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Where else can we buy it? Where else can we buy it?
So, Mayor, we talked about the vehicles, when they're special type during the year, the mayor, the city does that to the special.
Well, yeah, they have.
Does this fall into that?
That's from the last ordinance.
Okay, let's, uh, Walt Dyce is doing that. Let's move on. And, uh, get to next committee meetings, wage finance, we need anything? No? Public works?
No.
No? Emergency services?
No.
Parks committee, they meeting?
They're meeting every other week.
Okay. Okay, comments by all of them, let's start down here with Glenn. Okay, Charles?
Uh, you compared the roads on Saw Mill that, uh, finished today, so that was great. And, uh, our fire chief, fire department head responded to a accident that was pretty serious on Highway, Highway twelve, exit one-fifty-nine. No injuries on it for, for our people, uh, three people got injured pretty bad, though.
Yeah.
Yes. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, they did finish Phoenix today and Superior also, so they get all the roads. Reggie?
Uh, same. Thanks to Steve and his guys, they got all, uh, water, high dip, burst it repaired, and they got the speech repaired. And we paid.
Todd?
Yeah, you know, that water line, Steve and I have talked, and it's kind of, uh, I think Steve hates it when he sees my phone go, he's usually, I don't know how many water breaks I've called in, they have them the past year, so, but he probably hates that by now. And I would like to give a shout out to the, uh, uh, transfer station guys, they, they, uh, I was talking to them about, about picking up, you know, you guys know, and if you don't, you can do a bulk pickup without having to take it to the, the transfer station. If you call them, they'll, they'll come and pick all your stuff up. Um, I did it last minute, they took my stuff today, so, you know, good, good on that, I appreciate it. That's all I got, man.
Okay, thank you. Walter?
Yeah. They work all day on that, on the, uh, water line breakers. We appreciate that, and, uh, in accordance, finish being complete, as the mayor said, we really appreciate beautiful street. Thank you very much.
Michael?
Nothing.
Nothing? Todd?
Just a question, how far down Superior did they go?
Uh, they just did the, where the holes were.
Oh, okay, so it's a patch one, okay.
Yeah, patched those two holes where the, the trucks hauling and turning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve has a, a diagram, and he updates, I think it's up there on his slides.
Yeah, he's going to do that as part of his presentation.
All right.
Okay.
Real quick, I'm sorry. Uh, I did want to point out that our fire, I got a lot of compliments from citizens in our neighborhood and throughout businesses, that our police did a really good job last night with traffic control on that interstate. And our fire did not get done until five o'clock this morning. And that was a real bad accident, and they did a good job of excavating, getting those folks out of that truck, that driver. So, real good, I want really good, uh, round applause, or at least say thank you, because they did a good job last night, really good job, represented the city really well.
Yeah, it's two in one week.
Yes, sir.
Two big wrecks, yep. And I forty-four, so just be careful out there.
Please.
Okay, comments by administration, Fred Rico, congratulations on the new position.
Thank you.
Yep.
So.
I know that you've got nothing to do, but. She's been doing a fantastic job, she's really good at all. Was calling me and emailing me over the weekend, that's good.
I've had to get it done.
Okay. Uh, what do you got?
Um, so, our current balance, um, as of about three o'clock this afternoon, in our bank account, for our general fund, our main account, is, um, about a hundred, uh, one million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We're getting ready to get, um, some sales tax coming in, uh, street tax, capital tax, general tax, all that wonderful stuff coming in. And it looks like they have all been increasing since last year. Um, our street tax went up about eleven thousand, our capital improvement tax went up about ten, and then, um, our general sales tax went up, uh, twenty-one. And then, of course, our parks and our use tax have both come up, uh, five and six thousand respectively.
Yeah, okay. Uh, you can read yours, or Cassie?
I don't have anything.
Nothing, okay?
Cassie, you do have something.
You want to make a presentation or something?
I'm ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll show you guys our mapping system, what we're, we're working on here and here in just a little bit. Um, just wanted to go through, um, this was starting on the fourteenth of last month, so it's roughly about a two and a half, three week, uh, timeframe. We've had several water main breaks. On Monday, the fourteenth, we had one on Hoyle. That same day, we had, uh, one on Foxworth, so we actually had two going on at the same time. Um, on Thursday, the seventeenth, we repaired one on Old Route sixty-six. Uh, Saturday, the twenty se- uh, sixth, we had the, the one on East Lawn here, which that one, it was a break, but there was, uh, the, the line split long ways, so we actually had to, uh, cut out and replace about twelve feet of, of water main. Whenever you have to do that, you cannot do it live, you have to shut it down. There's not enough valving in that system to, uh, to choke down so you don't, um, put more people out of water. We are working on that, we've got some parts ordered, so we're going to be trying to get some live taps done and, uh, and our live.
We ordered four valves.
Yeah, we ordered four insert valve. Um, and we did find out a, a pretty big cause of, of what it is, and we'll, I'll show you that here in a little bit. Uh, on Monday, the twenty-eighth, we had one on Vernon, and on Thursday, the first, we had one at Mobile on the Run. Um, most everybody, except for the Vernon one, I believe, we had to shut that one down, um, because it was a, a split in the line also. Um, a lot of what happens is we, we've had a really bad drought, so the ground was extremely dry down in there, and then all of a sudden, you get these torrential rains and downpours. So, the moisture follows the water lines, gets underneath the ground, the ground starts to move, and then you have lines that break. All the newer stuff that's been bedded in and all that stuff, we usually don't have a problem with that. It's all the really old cast iron stuff that they laid on bedrock, no bedding, has clay mud around it, a lot of rock around it, and when the ground moves, it just snaps.
Basically, they lay, um, I don't know, probably a foot of peat gravel underneath it and lay it on that, so that it moves good and.
Yeah, now, all, all the lines, the, the newer stuff that gets put in, rule of thumb is the diameter of the pipe, that's how much gravel you put underneath it, and then you get about a foot on top of it. So. Um, also, on Monday, the fourteenth, we had a power outage, uh, that affected part of East Lawn and Cal Court. I don't know if anybody was, uh, in here was in, um, seeing any of that stuff. Um, we dug up the valves out here around the water tower, and, uh, we remapped those, so we know exactly what they're doing now. Everybody, me and Gary's probably been here the longest out of anybody, and, and we all was under the assumption that this valve done certain things, and it, we, after we dug it up, we found out that's not the case. How the contractor put it in was not how we would have done it, or how we would have proved it being done, so, um, we got what we got, and, but we're going to resolve that and fix it. Uh, Willard did complete, uh, Phoenix, Saw Mill, and Superior. There is some dirt work to be done on Phoenix, um, and I'm going to try to, um, get ahold of the contractor, find out when that's going to happen. I know we won't get much growth this year, um, if, unless we do winter wheat, you know, plant, and then we'll have to come back, um, and replant in the spring. Um, one manhole on Phoenix, we're going to have to do something with it, it's just, we didn't realize there was going to be that much of a crown in the road, so when they did put that heavy of a crown in the road, it, it threw the manhole, the manhole was flat, laid flat, so we will be repairing that in spring. We're, we're not going to try to do it this year, because we probably won't get asphalt, so we'll, we'll try to do something with that in the springtime, if everybody can bear with us on that. And on Saw Mill, I think, um, there's just one area where we need to do a little shoulder work, so, uh, put a little dirt on the, the shoulder of it, and that'll be the same way with seating and.
Glenn talked to me, him and his neighbor want to do an easement to have a drop drain, so we need to get that easement in place, and then, uh, we'll cut it some.
Okay, yeah.
The easement is already there, on the, on the flats.
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
We got easements on everybody's plate for.
We don't, I, I'd have to pull up the plat, and I don't even know if we have a plat for that, uh, Saw Mill Lenzman, that's been so many years ago, so we'll, uh, we'll do some.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Checking into it. And then, yeah, the street department was able, since they was making asphalt, the street department was able to get out and, and patch those areas. A lot of times, we have to wa- we have to go all through winter, um, you know, filling those, potholing them, and, and, uh, so we was glad to get those, those patched.
And that new roller does a nice job.
Yeah, uh, that's been needed for a long time, it solves a lot of issues, so. Uh, I know that, um, some, some of you is asking about our, uh, our mapping system, and this pretty much right here is, uh, our whole city, what we've been working on for the last couple of years. We've mapped the water and the sewer, we're starting to do the natural gas and the electric, so before too long, we'll have everything in. Um, it kind of looks jumbled up here, but as you zoom in, you can actually start seeing the lines and the valves, and, uh, I'll show you here in the parking lot after we dug it up. We was under the assumption that, that this valve here was on this line, and this valve controlled this line. After we dug it up, it's not the case. The contractor that installed, this is the newest line, they installed it on this, which is actually the fire line that runs to the original Walmart. That's a big no-no, we would have never allowed that to happen. So, when we shut down these two lines, we didn't do anything. They don't do anything. So, we're going to install a valve here and a valve here. So, this valve will actually kill out the smaller line, and this valve here will kill out the, the eight X line. If we have a, I've, I've printed off some maps, and I could bring them around and show you guys. Um, if we do have a water main break on East Lawn, there's not one magic valve that, that takes care of it all. We have to, I think there is probably six valves that we have to shut down or slow down to, to slow the flow, so we can get in there and repair it. So, I know that some people think one valve, that's all it does, we have a loop system, so you've got water coming at us in all different directions, feeding from different, different ways.
Yeah, the water tower overload flows in this way, too.
Yes. Everything's high.
The power is isolated and stuff.
Uh, with some, uh, some under the highway crossings. Um, so, when we had this water main break, we shut down every valve that we thought would, would kill it, and, or at least slow it down. That didn't work, so we kept moving out, kept moving out. We probably had twenty valves shut down, still didn't do us any good. And with that being a, a twelve-foot long crack in the line, it had to be cut out, so, trust me, we didn't want to be out there. It was, it was not a pleasant day. So, but, um, these are all built shots that we, we take, and we notate exactly whenever we have something dug up, a water main break, we'll go out and we'll shoot that, it'll, we can label it, whatever, whatever it is, a six-inch main, uh, cast. Um, and then we can actually come back in our mapping system and pull our line when we're on top of that, so we have a true, exact where it's at. Probably half the lines in the city have tracer wire, the other half does not, so when the, this old line here does not. So, when we're mapping these, we're going by just trying to remember what was put in the ground, or somebody's old map, hand-drawn map, or something like that, so. So, that's what we're up against. Um, I didn't know if anybody, we can look through this more, the manholes, uh, we, we have all of our sewer water hydrants, everything's on here. So, after the meeting, if you guys wanted to go into more detail, I could probably get, get into a little bit more, but, uh, I know they just wanted me to show kind of what we're doing, and we, we work this map daily. Anytime we're breaching a line, or, or any new subdivisions coming in, we're out there, uh, shooting everything in. Here's a new subdivision, you can see the, the old background map doesn't even have the roads in yet, but we have everything, we went up, shot everything, and have everything mapped, so we, we have all of our, we can tell where our meters are, any valves, any hydrants, fire hydrants, taps, all that, we, we map everything.
Steve, I got a question. Um, is it a way to find out how old certain infrastructure pipes are within the city?
We can go back through some of the, the, I guess, documentation of the, through this, laser fish or something, and kind of see when subdivisions was built, that'll give us an idea. You know, other than that, you know, we, we know where cast, the old cast iron lines are compared to the, the PVC lines, that's going to tell a big story. Yeah, we, we could probably figure out where most of the older ones, most of it's going to be around East Lawn, this area. Hoyle are, yeah, and that area. We did upgrade a lot of lines, or almost all the lines down Platter. So, everything getting to, to Hoyle and Vernon is new. There was just not a need to update those, those lines, because it, it is a dead end. Eventually, it may be loop fed through, and then that's probably when it will be updated.
Uh, not on the easement statement. Uh, each plot on Saw Mill Ridge has an easement, uh, that's, that's a city's easement. Now, uh, I can go and see how much easement is on each side based on my plot, but every moment within that subdivision has that plot mapped.
So, the documentary, you can do that with the documented easements, but there's very many places in the city where it's not documented, but we actually have an easement because of adverse possession and usage for the statutory period of time. So, we actually have a lot of easements that are not, uh, a public record, simply because for years since fifties, we've been doing things, and we have utilized them for the ten-year period. So, we actually have created our own legal easements, but they're not on that map. Now, what he's going to be able to do is, as the map develops and we get some kind of timeline, we may be able to identify those unrecorded easements.
Well, can, I do have a map, it's a sewer map, so there is easements in between certain lots out there, but they're sewer easements, not a utility easement. So, you have to be used for sanitary sewer only, not a stormwater pipe. It'd have to be rewritten to accommodate a storm.
I, I'm not real sure that's correct on adverse possession easements.
But where you're talking, it's not a sewer line down.
And we can use it for all of them.
So, I don't think there's an easement where we're needing one in that area.
I think what Charles is talking about, usually there's a ten-foot.
Yeah.
On each property, but, yeah, they're very specific about what can be on there, and that's what we would have to check.
And Todd can probably remember on, on Saw Mill Lenzman, when that was done.
You need twenty foot for.
Every subdivision has a ten-foot easement around the whole perimeter, not in between every lot.
Yes.
We do, we do that, if they do it around the, the whole perimeter of the development, not in between every lot.
On, on our particular flats, it's between the, each, each, uh, lot, is easement between each lot.
I not see.
In our particular flat.
I only see it on every other one as a sewer easement.
Yeah.
Well, that's cheap, real easy to check, all you got to do is, is look at the subdivision plat and the recorded easements.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can find that out.
Okay. Uh, Don, we'll go to you, and then we'll go back to four-point-one.
Uh, I instituted a new help desk system in the city, so employees have another way to contact me when they have computer problems. I've talked it over with Anita, and I sent out an email to all department heads that if it doesn't come through the help desk, unless it's an emergency situation, it doesn't exist, it's not a problem. Uh, because I have too many people, I'm walking down the hall, hey, uh, I got something wrong with my computer monitor, I'm supposed to remember that while I'm running around the building? Uh, something's going on at the pool, uh, unless someone comes up here and tells me, I don't know anything's going on down at the pool, I don't have time to go to every location we have in the city. So, uh, it's been working out really well, I like it, so that's about all I got right now. You didn't get the email?
You brought it up the last meeting, and I went back and looked, yeah, I checked my email.
Okay, I'll resend it.
Don, one question. How can we get those agendas in our Dropbox, so we can download them before we get here? On, on these tablets?
Put it in Dropbox.
I know. Uh, I usually do not do the Dropbox, that is Cassie's job.
I'd ask you, since you're a subject matter expert.
Yeah, usually Cassie attaches everything.
To the email.
We can just print it out. Okay, back to four-point-eleven, maybe the bill was.
Let me, let me announce the changes, if that's okay, Mayor.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, from the title, I'm deleting the last four words from Edmores Ford, so we're striking that. In section one, on the second from the last line, where it says from Edmores Ford, we're In section one, on the second from the last line where it says "from Ed Morse Ford," we're striking that. In section four, the last sentence is being changed to read, "The mayor is authorized to," the mayor is authorized in his discretion, "the mayor is authorized to use his discretion to allocate the funds to the purchase prices of the vehicles and to select the vendor sources for the truck purchases." That work?
Yep.
Okay.
Read his book.
Okay. Bill number twenty-two dash one-three-zero, an ordinance increasing the mayor's spending limit regarding the mayor's authorization to purchase four trucks.
The motion on the first reading, Todd makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion call over.
Glenn.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-three-zero, an ordinance increasing the mayor's spending limit regarding the mayor's authorization to purchase four trucks.
Can you get a motion on the second? Glenn makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification discussion call over.
Glenn.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Okay, read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three-nine-four-one, an ordinance increasing the mayor's spending limit regarding the mayor's authorization to purchase four trucks.
Make a motion on reading, and Michael makes a motion, second. Reggie, seconds, clarification discussion call over.
Glenn.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Okay, we're down to Ricky, he's out here tonight?
I have a report from Ricky.
Good, okay.
He sent a report to me, they took in four thousand two hundred and ninety-one tons for the month of November, averaging two hundred and four tons per day. He's at Ozark River's annual meeting, we received a reward for, an award for our electronics collection. We've done it for ten years and they're recognizing us for that. Ricky, I called him over to help me and Mark with some abbreviations. We probably discussed for fifteen minutes what CB meant. Ricky came over and he said, "Anita, that's cardboard." Anyway, while he was here, he discussed with me that the price for recyclables is really down and asking me what we needed to do about that. I told him to get ahold of Brady Wilson and DeRauld Recycling, maybe Brady could help him.
Well, the end solution is to get the warehouse building, build it, level the land up, and then they stuck dumpsters on it, but we're gonna build a cheap metal building that put all that stuff in to the, and stack it up. And then when ahead, if we've got four or five truckloads in there, when the price goes up, that's the best we can do. Because we get it on a regular basis, but we've gotta have someplace to put it.
I knew from the monthly meeting Brady had found a place to take his cardboard, so he was gonna call him and say.
Yeah, you just can't work up and get a truckload, because then you, whatever the price is at that time, you gotta stack it. And that's what Fort Lauderdale does, they got a big warehouse building out there.
Well, it's outside the stack too, me and Mark drove over there and looked.
They got a lot.
There's probably twenty-four bundles or more.
Big barrels.
Pound loads.
They hold onto it until the price goes up, you know, they won't ship it off unless they, and that's what you gotta do. Because the more the market is, the longer it stays. What else you got to mean?
That's all from Ricky.
Okay, Mike or Chris, okay. Tyce?
Yeah, I've got something real important I need to talk to you guys about, to get you thinking about it. It's amendment three on the recreational marijuana. It impacts the city at many levels. Not, we're getting inquiries, I think Charles has expressed some interest in it. And to me, it's gonna create more problems than answers here. The one benefit is that we can impose a three percent sales tax on it, we had put it on the ballot, but they haven't got functionality of the procedures yet and they won't for a few months. So getting it on the ballot, you would have to do it by early January to get it on the April ballot. So we got time to do that, but it's the one benefit that I think that we could get financially. Now, realize that they've created two categories of businesses here that can benefit. One of them is the current licensed medical marijuana folks can go to a comprehensive business where they do bullets. And they'll be the big dogs. We have a very competent business folks that have on the north side that kind of business. And I plan, I actually did the leases and everything for that, so I have some connections. I'm gonna see what they're gonna do. Now, the other one are these micro businesses, which are three different categories where people could come in, they're veterans, low income, those kind of things. They're gonna be very sparse with what they're doing here, but the micro businesses is kind of be just draw an email out of hat and get lucky, you make money. But there's, I've spent a lot of hours this weekend looking at it, and that's why I was late tonight, I was finishing up some notes. But we've got a couple of particular things we're gonna face real quick. Now, the main problem we're gonna have with this is that the, the federal has a federal safety work act, okay? Now, the problem with that act is that it provides that if you're under the influence of drugs, then there's a problem. So we've got recreational drugs over here, we've got a federal act over here that says you can't use the drugs. And the federal substance act basically equates marijuana to heroin and methanol. They haven't done anything for, you know, many decades now. So we're still back in the sixties or seventies with the federal act. Now, here's where this impasses. If one of our employees or our employees do not, for some reason, end up getting tested or something stupid happens, we're liable to return all of the grant money that's providing that work which that employee does, okay? For instance, we have a twenty-three-million-dollar sewer plant yard. So we are going to have to create an ordinance that says, because if y'all looked at amendment three, it's longer than the Missouri Constitution, okay? And I mean, I read pretty quick, it took me hours and hours to sort it out. Now, they sent me some stuff, but I don't trust other people to do things, so, et cetera. Anyway, the issue here is, we're gonna have to frame an ordinance that says for our employees, you cannot do this and be under the influence if you're working on any monies supplied by the federal government. As long as we show, under this amendment, as long as we show that we could lose those federal grant monies and we put that in the ordinance, we do it properly, we can tightly control what happens on our federal grant stuff. Now, we've got a lot of federal grant money out there. So the first thing we're gonna have to identify is those employees that are being utilized to perform federal grants-type services. And then we're gonna have to pass this ordinance. Because if you don't think that someday this couldn't bite us, it could bite us real bad. But if we do it now, it's very protecting, as the mayor said, I'm in protection mode all the time. So, but we have to do that. Now, there are some grants and stuff that are authorized under the act, but they don't give us because we don't have any drug rehabilitation, substance abuse programs or anything as a city. So those are primarily gonna be the bigger outfits with those kind of programs. So that won't impact us too much. Now, we also have the secondary usage on the CDLs, the federal CDLs. So on safety procedures where people have difficult or life and safety vax, we're gonna have to pass specific ordinances that say A, B, C, and D to say. Because it says we can't discriminate based upon this, but they can't be influenced on, under the influence on the workplace. But that all goes away if it's a safety issue like with the CDL, heavy equipment, STEVE, whatever. So we're gonna have to work that up. Now, we have some interesting things that are going to, the city has some authority here. We can, we can control public places and houses, just like you do with smoking. So we're gonna have to think about how you wanna do that. We can actually, they give us some authority to control the hours and how people do business under the zoning and licensing act. I think you're playing with dynamite there, because there's a definition in there of, the definitions and the way they're saying it is just looking to get a federal lawsuit against you for excess zoning or licensing, yeah. So how is the city gonna prevent, or how can we stop a restaurant from, say, selling candy? Well, the statute itself allows a person to transport without consideration, now that's the key. Without consideration. Without consideration, up to three pounds of dry, unprocessed marijuana. Three grams. Yeah, they can just do it, anybody over twenty-one can do that, okay? There's a lot of little kickers in here that are just really nuts, but that's one. Now, for instance, restaurants, you know, this thing says you can sell marijuana edibles and all that stuff. But the problem is, you go down to four more paragraphs and it says they have to be licensed as one of these micro businesses or one of the major businesses to be able to do that, okay? So in our ordinance, we have to. You know, 'cause people are gonna read what they're gonna read and they'll read these simple little one-page excerpts and we're playing with dynamite. To me, the idea that we would use zoning and licensing to control that kind of business, now especially with the outfit we got on the north side, which is a bunch of very savvy investors that are in multi-states and do it, they're very good. But these microprocessors, micro businesses, we get a couple of those in here, that could get pretty interesting. So we need to set up what we're gonna do with that. But I think we could do it like we control the liquor hours, you can sell from eight to one in the morning, those kind of things. I think we can do it like we do that and justify it under our zoning and licensing ordinances, okay? But I think we can control it like we do alcohol, okay? I've been thinking about this, 'cause I could see what's, the train is coming, the train wreck that's coming at me here, okay? See, we can govern time, place, and manner of operation, but it's, it's really kind of, they got all these little kickers in there where you can get your butt sued in federal court for, for what they call taking, which is taking without, taking property without due process of law compensation. So I could see a fifth amendment whack at us in a heartbeat if we're not sensible of what we do. But if we come at them the same way that we control public smoking or ordinances or alcohol ordinances, I think we can justify it because of other situations, you know, it's a common usage, well-accepted. So I think we can protect ourselves by doing it that way and still have some control. You've got to understand that under the present situation, if you are smoking a lot of recreational marijuana under federal law, you cannot have a CDL and you cannot have a firearm. So if somebody's in recreational, I mean, there is a lot of lit fuses around here that if the feds change policies or the chips, you know. So we wanna make sure that we are not in the way of any of these fuses and that we control what we're doing in the proper manner. So I'm not gonna waste any more time, because I did a quick summary and that's four pages long. But I'm just telling you that I want you to think about, 'cause there's an awful lot of misconceptions out there, people talking about what it is and what it isn't. And I'm telling you that that sucker's just thick, if you try to read it. And the problem is, they'll say one thing up here and then they'll accept it down two pages later. So it's got a lot of complexities, but we're gonna do it right. So what I've done is I've gone through every place where the city is involved and we're gonna do it right. But the main thing here is dealing with the government grants, how we control public consumption, and passing the three percent sales tax, I think. Because I think we can make some good money on it on three percent sales tax, particularly with the business we've got in operational on the north side now. But I just wanna go through that real quick, Mary, because I know it's coming. Yes, sir?
Real quick, I was listening to really the tail end that caught my attention was, if something's in place to mitigate the hours of sale of this substance, correct?
Yeah.
And if those hours are violated, then can the city make up an ordinance to find said persons that violate that without step.
Yeah, we can violate it, it's very specific. And then they have this, what they call a standard, a standard of operation. And I don't, and I don't understand it. And if I don't understand it, then I think it's a little tricky. To me, I just think you just follow what you did with alcohol and do the same dang thing, and then you avoid getting your butt kicked because you have a substance that can impair your abilities to do things and you follow the same procedures that have been in place for fifty years, then I think you're gonna be all right.
Tyce, this is what I understood when they say it's standard. I understood it as meaning that the city is responsible for setting it in the ordinance.
No, it's, these are optional, you know, but it doesn't say shall, it says may.
May. Now, if we don't do it, then we can't enforce it.
Well, some of these, the way it reads, I think you may have, I mean, do you want to not? Okay, we've got ordinances saying you can't have marijuana in the city anymore. Those have all been repealed by act a while now. So all our ordinances on marijuana and stuff are gone. The Constitution vote took care of that, it's gone, okay? So what do we do now if Joe Blow's over here, some kid, there's a no-smoking area over here by very close, okay? I'm just giving you an hypothetical. And somebody comes out and somebody's smoking a cigarette and the next guy lights up a toke and starts right here in a public area and he's, it's recreational, and that's gonna happen. It's just gonna happen. So what do we do with that situation? We can, under this, say, "You can't do that." And we can designate private areas where you can smoke, but we can say public areas, we can control public areas. And I don't, I think we're gonna have to do that, or I think, I think the, especially the older population, you know, us youngsters worry about the older population, though there's maybe two of them left in the city that's older than I am. You gotta worry about, 'cause somebody that walks out of this post office and sees somebody smoking a toke over here, some little old lady's gonna be calling the city and wanting everybody arrested. So if we don't control that particular public smoking, I think it's gonna cause us a real problem someday. So I think we say now, a hundred-dollar fine, which is what we're limited to. If somebody wants to do it, fine, here's a hundred-dollar fine, give us a C-note. Okay, next time you do it, send a C-note, I mean, that's what we restrict it is. That's the kind of thing I'm thinking about.
Well, you can't drink in public.
What?
Can't drink in public, out in public.
I can't either.
You can't go out and drink a beer out in the break area in public, so it'd be kind of the same thing.
We can control it. I think, but the thing is, what he's asking is, the ordinance to control it is voluntary with us, whether we wanna do it. And I think we need to do it, just like we do here and.
It's just like watching the speed limit.
Yeah, but that's just one of the, that's one of the littler problems here. You wanna talk about it, I do, you know you do.
Nothing like mental gymnastics with Tyce.
Okay, so the next council meeting is December the twentieth, by. Okay, so the next council meeting is December the twentieth at five p.m. And we don't have a closed session tonight, so we're gonna get a motion to vote.
Mayor, I have a report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a big report I'll have you to know. Well, for the last five or six months, me and the mayor and Missouri Neon have been working on our Neon Park.
Oh, okay.
And so, uh, this is an actual sign that will be attached to the, uh, Neon signs in the park. We do have some larger signs that will have to have this, uh, the size and this increase so it looks proportionate. But this is our design and, uh, anyway, so that, we gave birth to the six-month-old child, and we were glad. That turned out really nicely. We're proud of that. The police department asked me to remind you that Shop With A Cop is December the seventeenth. If anyone wants to stop by and make some more donations to the police department. The calendar for 2023 is done. Mark and Fred worked on it, and I went through it, made some changes. The mayor went through and said I could pass it out, so there you go. And also, uh, the, uh, we met, the transportation MRPC, we met at Plaski County and went over the stiff and the priorities for 2020, for the coming years. We met with Preston Kramer and the commission. And if you'll look, um, we have a couple of projects that will be funded. Uh, one in 2024, the entire route on Highway Wide for safety improvements.
They're gonna widen each lane for, for that, widen by highway. I'm, I've been on my seven, but they got, makes a lane wider.
And then, they had our project on here, uh, which I didn't understand that, but Y and St. Robert Boulevard. It's a joint project, but that was on here as funded. They had the airport on here and, 'cause they're funding part of that. And, uh, we had to hold on that till we could get mayor to answer some questions. John wasn't sure. And then, in 2025, the climbing lanes east and west on the interstate where all the accidents are at.
From the Ruby Duke Bridge up to one fifty-nine ramp.
Those were funded.
And new three lanes coming up.
And 2025, the Exit one fifty-nine on-ramp extension. So, it takes a lot to get things on the stiff, uh, so we were-
Yeah, it was trying like four or five years, and they finally, they're gonna be built twenty-four to twenty-five.
Right. So, we were excited that those got funded, and, uh, mayor's been announcing it on the radio, but we haven't had a meeting to pass it out for you. I've been working with Gilmore and Bell on the bond refinancing, uh, refinancing with David Martin. Cassie, uh, forgot to give an election update, but election opened this morning, uh, sign-ups for alderman and mayor. Holiday in the park was a success. Mark and his staff and, uh, all the, actually, all the administrative staff dressed up as characters and worked, and we had a fun time. Charles and Glenn worked it. Um, it was just a, it was fun to get out and just be crazy. Cassie was an awesome elf, and she did a bunch of Facebook Lives, if you follow us on Facebook. Alice Acres Arnie stopped by today, said to tell you guys hi. He was going through city properties. Uh, they do that several times during the year. David Bohannon come over and visited with me and had some questions on, uh, for Richland Utilities, so I helped him out. Uh, we had to learn how to do, uh, with Edna gone. We've had to reassign what people are doing and try to figure out some things. So, for everybody that's helping us out with our learning curve, all your patience, we appreciate that. Uh, Edna did a lot, and we're all finding our center, so kudos to the staff. Nobody's complained, and everybody's done an awesome job. So, we figured out about sales tax exemptions for contractors. We had to do one for Don Magai for Phoenix, and then Bill Tech for the RV Park. We got that figured out. The TAP grant, we had, uh, engineering qualifications were due, uh, last week, and we received two, one from Archer Elgin and one from CJW Engineering out of Springfield. So, we'll have to get together, all get together with the mayor, and we'll score those and get that turned into the state so we can go on and get our funding done. Worked with John in Waynesville on how we were gonna handle tra-, uh, commercial trash billing, and we worked it out. And then, Toma, which is our drug and alcohol company, they're doing the training, and we were in Waynesville, and we were able to get, um, our Public Works employees, those that needed it, and the transfer station employees, uh, in the drug and alcohol training and the suspicion of drug class. So, they didn't really have to travel anywhere, so that, that works out to our benefit. I talked to you about the savings. Uh, it was four percent what we're getting Jan-, uh, December first with Mary's County Bank. Mark is working on the Neon Park, the bricks. Uh, Fred's supposed to be getting a credit card number so we can get that out there. There'll be an additional call for TAP projects. Um, it'll come out in a few days. And anything that's shelf-ready, they said, would probably be funded. So, I talked to Jeff and the mayor, and Jeff's supposed to be looking to see what we have. And, uh, we'll move with that. Kevin Johnson at Toyota had a problem. We were able to help him with. And I've been getting emails and calls on marijuana, which I'm forwarding to Tyce to answer. Tyce loves me.
I wanna raise.
We, uh, processed payout number seven with McClanahan, which was the first one we've had to do. So, we got that figured out and done. Mid-Missouri, uh, Power and Energy Pool met and went over some things. They'll meet again in December. Uh, Tyce, I sent that over to you too. They called Monday and said our recycle bins are on the way. That's the one we got the grant for eleven thousand dollars, and we didn't have to purchase them. And open enrollment for the city's insurances, health insurance and all that is in the morning. Cassie volunteered to come in at seven-thirty and meet them. Awesome job. CoUSA was offering a free water and sewer class that they were able to get Waynesville and the sewer district and us in on, and then they had to reschedule it. Uh, the instructors, something happened with them. And that's it, Mayor.
Yeah, the transfer station got their second trail coming in.
I recommend that we do a not drawn scale copy for the Neon Park.
Oh, what?
A non-drawn scale, uh, diagram of the Neon Park, because we expended a lot of money.
Yeah, this is wrong somewhere. It's a bit of that.
It's not one.
Yeah, this is made by the architect. It's all worded.
The one Beth had from-
Yeah, yeah, one day.
Where is it? I don't know, was it-
It was out in the mallway, the one that, uh-
Was out here for years.
'Cause the tourist-
When they were trying to do fundraising.
Yeah, they, they're briefing it at the tourist center, and it's nothing to, to look at, to see. So, maybe we could reproduce it, and so, when people ask-
It might be in the secret room. I don't know. I'll look. That was the one that Stephanie Ireland did.
And it's basically the same one.
I got one question for Steve, Mayor, if that's okay. Hey, Steve, can you give us an update on the RV park?
Uh, yeah, they are, um, finishing up pouring the slabs. I think they have all the, the center slabs, concrete slabs poured. I think on the south end, the approaches are all done on that side. And they was working on the, the approaches on the, the north side, so.
And they did half of the pads for the utilities.
How about water source? Has that been put in yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everything's in, in the, in the park. We just don't have it out of that area yet. We don't know exactly which direction to go, so, we're waiting on engineering on that.
Can I just talk to Jeff just part of the, he's gonna get with James and have him down and talk to him.
Okay.
Yeah, if you haven't been over there, they did a nice job on the concrete. Wild came up great. And then, Steve just gotta go back and backfill the, uh, the gravel, bring it up to the height of the concrete. But then, they gotta do some landscape and stuff like that, I guess.
Yeah, I think we, we put the first layer of gravel down. We held it down till they got all the concrete poured, so they didn't have to do any excavation while they was pouring that. Now, whenever they get their concrete done, we'll go in there, finish the road bed, and then, uh, do a lot of the site work then.
I have the, completely downhill side of the RV park not yet, you know, on this opposite side.
The right side?
Yeah, the right side. You're going in.
Yeah, they, they dug out all the pad sites and put gravel.
So, they had to put the concrete-
There's not concrete here, so.
No, they'll be gravel, and we're done. We only have four inches in there. We still like about seven more inches of gravel to put in. So, we've just held off on that till a lot of the site work's done, so we don't track up the gravel. That'll be like the final thing.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, it's gonna look nice. We get all the, uh, the top soil in between the concrete and all that stuff and around the, the ground site. And I, I think, uh, we'll just add more concrete a little bit each year, 'cause it's so expensive. Mr. Wallace, would you introduce your students?
Oh, my pleasure. Tonight, I've got Gabby, Gabe, Antoine, Jay, and Caitlin working for you now. Thank you for having us.
All from Waynesville?
Uh, no, Newburgh, Plato, and Waynesville, but they're all seniors.
Okay, get a motion to close. God makes a motion, Glenn second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
See you, kids.